The recording has started.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm now calling the Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners to Order. Time is seven o'clock PM. Please note that in accordance with the Government Code Section 54953E3, this meeting is being held by teleconference only. Because we're video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of recording. I will indicate when commissioners, staff, presenters, and the public will provide comments. If you've called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comments for the benefit of the recording. Please practice considerate video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you're not speaking and limiting destructive behavior on camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll calls this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Spreen.
Here.
President Sherlock.
Present.
Oh, sorry, Vice President. Commissioner Basiji.
Here.
Commissioner Tonka.
Here.
Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn. And Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Okay, and we have six commissioners present. For the benefit of the recording, I will also conduct a presenters, consultants, and staff roll call. Assistant Fire Chief Glass.
Present.
Strategic Planning Consultant Scott.
Here.
Emergency Services Manager Gluhem.
Present.
Operations Manager Barnett.
Present.
General Manager Logan.
Here.
General Analyst and Projects Programs and Grants Manager Rendler. You don't see her. Lead Deputy County Counsel Sheldon.
Present.
Cert Program Analyst Bebe.
Present.
Fire Safe Council Executive Director Chalet. Don't see him either. Fire Safe Council Hazard Rescue Reduction Project Manager Armstrong.
Present.
District Engineering Consultant Tarantino.
Present.
Okay. Right, and presenters, consultants, and staff are accounted for.
Great. Thank you everyone for being here. I have a couple of bits of news I'd like to sort of broadcast before we get started. First, I just want to, for everyone listening, highlight the upcoming Preparedness Fair on Saturday, April 30th. Not this Saturday, the next Saturday, Saturday, April 30th, at Los Altos Hills Town Hall from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I'll let staff tell you more details about this later in the evening, but I wanted to take every opportunity to get it in people's heads. Saturday, April 30th. Come on out. The list of vendors and groups participating is very impressive, so tell your neighbors. Send people to the website for more information on it if you want to, but April 30th, it's really... The amount of effort that goes into creating these events is really amazing, and the amount of stuff that's been put together for this is remarkable, so... Just want to point that out. Now, for a second item. This is one of those more bittersweet items, kind of both happy and sad. Many, most, or maybe all of you have known or worked with Fire Chief Tony Bowden over the years. And the reason so many people know him is that he started his career in 1996, working with the Los Altos Fire Department. And that same year, came into the Santa Clara County Fire Department when Los Altos and Los Altos Hills contracted service there for the first time. So as he rose to be Fire Chief, he was one of our own. He's been here and in our fire station all these years, and someone who's spent his career in our little neck of the woods. And it's just wonderful to see him have such a great career coming out of our fire station. He's been great to work with, and when we had our meetings at the fire station, I just happened to be always seated next to him at the end. And I was new at the time, and I think I bugged him with an awful lot of really tough and annoying questions, and he never shied away from answering me, no matter how stupid my questions were, and always got back to me on anything I brought up. And so it was just a joy to work with him. And the reason to bring it up is he has officially retired as of last month. So we won't be seeing him here anymore, and I'm happy for him and sad for us, but just want to pass on the news that Fire Chief Bowden has officially retired. So with that, we will now move on with the rest of our meeting. Item three, public comment. Persons wishing to address the commission on any subject not on the agenda may do so now. Now, please note however, the commission is not able to undertake extended discussion or action tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. District policies limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker unless the number of... Excuse me, the number of speakers requires the commission president to impose shorter time limits. I don't think that will be the case this evening, so I think we would have our full three minutes. Do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda?
I do not see any.
Seeing none. We will now move on to item four, the consent calendar. And any changes to the order of the agenda? Let's see, are there any comments from staff on these items? Hearing none. Are there any questions from the commission on these items, or would any commission like to make changes to the consent calendar? Or the order of the agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. With the commission making a motion, and the commissioner's second motion, please state your names for the benefit of the recording.
Warren moves to adopt the consent calendar as printed.
Thank you.
Second, Tonka.
Great. Great, items now open for discussion. Is there any discussion with the commission on any of these items? Is there any public comment on these items? Looking for any raised hands? Don't move too fast, but I don't see anything. Great, hearing none, but no for discussion, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Spreen.
Yes.
Vice President Sherlock.
Yes.
Commissioner Basiji.
Yes.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Great, thank you. We'll now move on to item five, which is receiving the Santa Clara County Fire Chief's report. It's the monthly report. Five A is the monthly report. Five B is an update on the fuels management crew, and five C is an update on the fire prevention risk prevention programs. Acting Fire Chief Glass, please provide the report.
Thank you, President Spreen. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm operating on limited bandwidth.
You're great.
I may turn off the video when I start sharing the screen. Thank you for the send off for Chief Bowden. Apologize that he's not able to make it to be here to hear your kind words, but I'll be directing him to the video to hear what you had to say. I'm sure he'd be very appreciative of it. Also, news on the Fire Chief front. I will be stepping back to the Assistant Fire Chief role. Deputy, excuse me, Acting Assistant Fire Chief Suwana Kirkow has been appointed to the Fire Chief position effective today. That was made public at the Board of Supervisors meeting, so congratulations extended to Fire Chief Suwana Kirkow, who begins her tenure as Fire Chief for the Santa Clara County Fire Department effective today. So I'll be supporting her in her transition into the Fire Chief role and still continue to serve as the liaison for the Los Altos Hills Fire District. And when Chief Kirkow gets settled, we'll make sure that she is properly introduced to all the board members that may have not had the opportunity to meet her yet. But she comes with 20 years of experience inside County Fire. She was a member of Denise Gluhem, myself's probationary firefighting class, so she's got a long tenure with County Fire, and look forward to the partnership moving forward. With that, I'll begin the screen share, and I'll try to work through all of the different topics that we need to touch on. Let me get with the screen share option. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, and it looks like I'm sharing the whole screen, even the outside of the perimeters. I'm going to try to adjust that. Let's see if I can pull that off. You are screen sharing, but it's showing the whole thing. Anyways, I apologize for that. Can everyone see it okay?
Chief Glass, do you want me to pull it up on mine? Is that easier?
Oh, if you don't mind, that would be wonderful. I apologize, I'm trying to operate off one computer screen here. I will stop sharing. Okay, and we'll, no significant events to report here in this report. That would be captured there in the first paragraph, which is a great thing. We'll go ahead and scroll down to page two, and we'll take a look at the statistics. Again, we're looking at about 198 calls so far this year in 2022, so we're right on pace. Things have picked back up, and you can kind of see the trend line there. Our incident count by month, 55, and so that's pretty standard right in there. The standard breakdown, about 50 to 60% are EMS-related calls, service calls following, and then fire alarms. We did have four reported fires, and just want to remind the board that when you see that, those are as the call is dispatched. So we might have gone to a smoke in a structure, or a fire in a pot, or on a cooking vessel. That's then extinguished when we arrive. As you can see, most importantly, zero dollar loss. We'll take a quick look at our response times. Engine 75 had five responses into the Los Altos Hills Fire District, still meeting their time, 5 minutes 38 seconds. Engine 77 did have one call. We had engines committed. That was over the mark, 759 is the mark we're looking for, and so that is the one area where we've got to continue to do better. Occasionally, these calls happen where we have multiple back-to-back calls, or we have engines that are moving around the district, supporting either calls in other parts of the jurisdiction or training efforts. It appears we did five community education and risk reduction activities, and I have a list of those at the request of the General Manager to provide. Either I can share that, I can attempt to share that after that. We'll go down to the third page, please. The third page will show the distribution of calls throughout the district. The purple line indicates the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, and then of course, the towns and cities around it. Remember, it's part of an entire system. So we have engines in Los Altos, we have the engine there in Loyola Corners, and then we have the engine at El Monte, the rescue at El Monte. And then we also receive automatic mutual aid from the cities of Mountain View and Palo Alto. So again, a lot of these calls are landing in and around the fire district, with again, that number of... I forget the total number that we had for the year, is on the previous page, 53 or something like that, showing up within the district. So 55, I was close. Okay, and with that, I'll take any questions from the commissioners. I'd be happy to try to answer those for you.
Great, thank you, Chief Glass. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Not hearing any. Nice quiet evening. Any public comments on this item? Any questions? Not seeing any hands raised as well, so thank you so much, Chief Glass. I guess we will move on to item six, in that case, the General Manager Report.
Very good, thank you very much.
Okay, item 6A and 6B are the reports. General Manager Logan, please present them.
Thank you, Board President Spreen. Let me see if I can get on the proper screen share here.
Can I interject for one sec?
Sure. Please.
We have items 5B and C. I don't know if there's any updates for the fuels management crew and the fire prevention risk.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Was there anything else additional, Chief Glass, wanted to report on that?
Yeah, I can give a quick report out on where we're going. I think this is probably in reference to the referral that was received from Supervisor Semidion's office today. He has identified that there is a wildfire risk that is present within the West Valley foothills and the communities served as part of the redistricting in District 5. The wildland threat, as we all know and have been actively participating in reducing, has always been here. And again, it's just good to have the support of the supervisor's office as we begin to move forward and grow that program. In April of '21, we hired a battalion chief, Mike Matheson, to come in and begin our fuels project. We then started working with Los Gatos and some of the West Valley cities, including Cupertino, to secure a $2 million grant. And so we're going to begin hiring the wildfire specialist to begin identifying those areas, target areas within the West Valley hills where we can focus our efforts. And then we're also exploring a pilot program with our fuels crew, and we're calling it a fire fuels crew, because we're going to start out as a fuels crew, but hope to build it on, you know, the successes of its merits into a full-fledged fire crew. And that would be one that not only does pre-fire management and vegetation management, but responds to emergencies throughout the jurisdiction. The assist fire crews with cutting hand line, mopping up the fire, cold trailing, and making sure that the overall extinguishment of the fire. And then, of course, rehabbing the area, making sure that we're doing erosion control mitigation measures post-fire. Again, this is in the pilot stage right now. We're really happy to have the support of the supervisor's office. And again, we'll be presenting on Thursday's Hewlett Housing Land Use Environment and Transportation Committee, the proposed plan. The other thing we're looking at doing, the district has purchased a large chipper of our own, and we're looking to increase capacity in partnership with the Fire Safe Council on their community chipping days within the jurisdiction, once the fuels crews is established. So again, we're just increasing capacity within the Central Fire District and looking forward to any partnerships that we have with Los Altos Hills moving forward. Does that cover what you're looking for?
I think that's great. I think General Manager Logan may touch on the supervisor report as well, but I think it's great to have so much more exposure and access for everyone in this area to such resources. That's what we all are looking for, so thank you very much for that.
Yeah, you're very welcome, and we continue to look forward to the partnership with Los Altos Hills' Fire District as we move forward in our combined efforts, and of that of the Fire Safe Council here in Santa Clara. They've done an amazing job.
Yeah, and I just think that we've really been paving the way for a lot of people to learn how to do this right. And so we appreciate the opportunity to spread our expertise throughout the county, so... Thank you. And we will move on to General Manager Logan, her report.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Victoria, for helping me out there. So the cover slide presents a photo of Cert General Analyst Victoria Bebe and Puppy Ember at the recent Happy Hounds event at Burnt Preserve, where she and Ember participated and shared Los Altos Hills County Fire District goodwill with the residents. The second photo is of the new El Monte Fire Station Type III engine. And Chief Glass, could I ask you, you want to make any comments about the engine? Give us some background on it. I don't really have much information except the photo.
Yeah, no problem. We were very excited to purchase these in 2018, 2019 is when we took delivery. This is the second generation of our Type III Wildland firefighting fleet. We've got our first Type 3s in 2009. Again, one of those was stationed at El Monte Fire Station. So this unit is just more modern, a little bit different configuration on the back. It carries 500 gallons of water, has a 500 gallon per minute pump, has the ability to do pump and roll capability, and it does carry ALS gear, which is the advanced life support capability that's delivered by our firefighter paramedics that are assigned to the El Monte Fire Station. The unit is part of the mutual aid system, so we do have the ability to send it out, and we communicate that through the General Manager to the board when we do that. But again, it is the efforts of the fire district and Central Fire participating in joint mutual aid throughout the state of California. And this is, you know, your tax dollars and district funds hard at work here. Again, this is also a very similar unit, it's actually identical with a different number change, that we have partnered with yourself and Palo Alto Fire Department to place at Station 8. The only difference between that unit and this unit is the number on the side. With that, I'm happy to take any questions specific to the fire engine.
Okay, thank you, Chief Glass. That was really helpful.
You're welcome.
Victoria, next slide, please, Slide 2. Okay, events and activities slide. I wanted to highlight that district staff is following the hearings and approval of a new regulation from State Insurance Commissioner's Office. And these new regs will take into account specific wildfire mitigation factors used by residents as part of their insurance rating for homeowner insurance coverage, renewals, and premiums. And then I also wanted to note that the IT vendor update. Next week, the district staff and county councils will be reviewing three service providers received, service proposals received in the current round of search for an IT managed service provider. And I'll provide the results and hopefully a recommendation at the May 17th meeting for an IT provider. And then, next slide, please. This is the report from the meeting today with the County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to inform the commission and the public that the Board of Supervisors met today and approved item 15, and that is by Supervisor Wasserman, which is a referral to the administration and to county council to report and present options for strategies to ensure emergency and fire service in South County, and that that service remains adequate and sustainable. A chart that reviews the fundings for the various fire districts, including Los Altos Hills County Fire District, is included in the report. And I've attached the report. Item 15 is attached in the commission and agenda packet for review. And then the Board of Supervisors met today and also approved item 20 by Supervisor Semidion, which is a referral to the Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District to report with options for pre-fire management and wildfire resiliency programs, including addition of fuels crew and enhancement of the Wui Community Chipping Program. Both of these reports are added to the agenda packet. And Slide 3, I'd like to review this slide. And this is an update on the installation of acoustic leak detector caps on district hydrants. The district drafted an agreement to allow for the installation of the hydrant cap sensors and sent the proposed agreement to Prisma Hills Water District for review and response. And updates will be provided at future commission meetings as these discussions proceed. So I talked with General Manager Phil Witt regarding this agreement, and I read him this slide. And so we're both on board with having these additional discussions to be sure that the agreement gets taken care of and back to the commission and to his Board of Directors. And that concludes my slide, so happy to take any questions or respond with any direction from the commission. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? I see one, George, go ahead.
Yes, General Manager Logan, the Board of Supervisors' actions today, did they give any kind of guidance and timing of their hope to create a resolution or a plan or report back?
Yes, let me just check that. Supervisor Wasserman, I believe... Let me get that on my screen here. Wants coming back to Hewlett on April 21st and then report to the board in May. And I'm trying to remember which one it is, if it's 15 or 20. I believe it was...
20.
20?
Yeah, that was the, that was the direction back to the Central Fire District to return to the board this Thursday, and then to come to the full board in May.
Okay. Chief Glass, is there any details you want to provide for that? Although I think you pretty much did the detail background.
Yeah, because I mean, we're still developing the plan, and we'll present it at Hewlett, and then it'll need to be recommended by the Hewlett Committee to come to the full board. But you captured it very well, General Manager.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Tyson, did that help or any other questions?
Yes, that answered it, thank you very much.
Okay, perfect.
Any other commissioner questions before we go to the public? Seeing none, I see we have one public hand raised. Alan, do you want to go ahead? Alan, I think you can go ahead.
Try.
There you go.
Yes, I'm just wondering if either of these pronouncements have any significance to our district? Do they provide us with any additional resources? Do they take away any resources? Do they provide any additional money? I wonder if there's any significance of these announcements to our district. Thank you.
I'll take that. I think, well, for one, this just happened today, so I think it does affect our district. We were called out, certainly in one of them, in terms of trying to make sure that all the districts in the county are sustainable and viable. And so I'm sure there will be discussions into how to make sure things are balanced and how we can collaborate better among the various districts. But again, this just having happened today, there's been no chance for further discussions, and those will be happening during the month, I'm sure. And I think the other one, in terms of the fuel crews and the sort of fire prevention in the rural areas, Chief Glass has already sort of commented on quite a bit. We certainly expect, I certainly hope we'll be working with them, both to spread our expertise with them, and to, because we want every rural area following the same practices we are. I think we're really showing leadership in those areas. Our staff has been the first ones to figure out how to do this, and we want others to benefit from that as well. So I assume we will be involved with that, and I hope to be doing that in a very collaborative way. Okay, any other comments from the public? Or commission? Seeing none, thank you, General Manager, for your report. Let's see, we will now move on to item seven, receiving the LAFCO report, which is also going to be from General Manager Logan. Please present this item.
Thank you, Board President Spreen. LAFCO met on April 6th, and attached in the agenda packet is the LAFCO staff report with next steps for a new consultant to generate the LAFCO County Wide Fire Service Review. And that is really the end of my report. The attachments provide all the details. Thank you.
Thank you, this will be more of an update, just to see how that item manages to move through history. I know it's been dragging on longer than we all expected, but we want to make sure everyone stays in touch with what that is, as I'm sure that will continue to be important, as all these discussions about the various county fire districts and how to keep them going correctly. So this is just one more discussion about that. Any comments on that or questions from anybody? I see, remember, the public has a question on this item, so Alan, you may go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Just kind of related question. There's a, there's a parallel study being done by the county. I was wondering if there's any progress with regards to that report that you could report on. Thank you.
I have heard nothing from that. I think it's been, I'll ask if General Manager Logan has heard anything either. So far, we have, it's been pretty quiet on this front. And this has been discussed for a number of months now, but there's been no, we've not been contacted, there's been no reports out, so I don't know of anything. I'm looking for any nodding heads, if anyone else knows any other information, but I don't see any.
Chief Glass.
Chief Glass. Go ahead, Chief Glass.
Thank you, President. I just would like to provide the update that we did submit response data for Los Altos Hills Fire Protection District to the county executive's office, the Matrix Group that is doing that research several, about two months ago now. And we have not seen, excuse me, I take that back. We did get a draft version of the response data back, and we were asked for a point of contact for further discussion with your district, and we did provide that to the General Manager as the point of contact. So I'm not sure if they've reached out or not. Apparently, it sounds like they have not, but again, we've been trying to facilitate whatever the Matrix Study Group is doing as it relates to the fire districts. They're obviously looking at the Central Fire District as well, but we have not provided anything other than at this time, response data that I'm aware of.
Great, thank you, it's very helpful.
You're welcome.
Okay, seeing no other hands up, I guess we will move on. Let's see, to district reports. Operations, Emergency Services, Cert, and Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction. Item eight is to receive these various reports and provide direction to staff. Items eight, A through H are reports. Strategic Planning Consultant Scott, please introduce this item.
Hi, good evening, thank you, President Spreen. For the next two agenda items, eight and nine, you will hear from various staff about their substantial progress on programs that support hazardous fuel reduction and hard evacuation routes. These efforts support strategic goals one, three, five, and six, and those are, goal number one is the CWPP and Annex Four, and that informs us with fire science and guides our program decisions and planning. Strategic Goal Three is the Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction Goal. Goal Five is Communication Outreach and Education, and Goal Six is Sustainability of the District. So this is a good time to remind the commission and the public that the district has six strategic goals in support of the district's mission. And as you listen to these presentations, you will see that district personnel have expanded their programs in education, reduction of hazards through vegetation removal and chipping services, and are scaling up longer-term planning to continue this work in partnership with regional agencies. So with that brief, big-picture context, I will now turn the program over to General Cert Analyst Victoria Bebe.
Hi, good evening, thank you for having me. Sorry, I tried to make this bigger, but it just kind of went out on my screen, so I'm going to have to keep it small, and I apologize for that. Really excited to share some things with you tonight. We've been very busy as a staff. I'm going to let Denise talk about her emergency services program manager tasks and her report. I would like to focus on our cert drills and trainings that we have coming up. We have our very first teen cert... We have our very first teen CERT drill coming up on Saturday. We are back to the basics with both our teen CERT program as well as our adult CERT program. And it is a learn from the. The CERT group, so they're going to run the drill, they're going to teach their teen CERT. Group how to activate the ARC and what those roles are in after disaster, so they will be having a good review on that. They've done all the planning, the teen CERTs are really excited, so I hope to have some good video and pictures. At my next report next month. We also are going to be going into the Pathways Run. The CERTs have been asked by the town to provide emergency communications with the ECC. As well as some light traffic control and some situation awareness update, so really excited to be there. I'll be out. There bright and early on May seventh morning, so if you're enjoying the Pathways event, come on by and say hi. Grab some, some coffee and some snacks. Next up is our Spring Drill. I've been talking about that. We are now in our finishing stages. Our run-through is going to be with teen CERT this Saturday, so. You know, I think they're all very, very much looking forward to that. I'm now going to turn over to my teen CERT report and sorry, I have to click back and forth with things and I apologize for that. Here we go.
I'm going to encourage the commissioners, if you have any questions, put your hand up at any time and we'll, we'll. Interrupt for that so that you get the question closest to the information you're interested in, so don't feel you need to wait to the end to raise your hand.
And also too, just remember, as I'm presenting or anyone's presenting, I can't really see anybody raise their hand, so. Hopefully you can help their president screen on that one. Okay, here we go with our teens report. Okay, sorry, full disclosure. You guys didn't hire me for my editing, editing professionalism, so I apologize and. I learned something about myself. I make really weird faces and so unfortunately you're going to see. Poor Mihika started to talk and I put on myself for some reason. I can't get it off the video. You guys can all laugh at me. I'm going to laugh at myself. I spent half an hour trying to take it off, so I just wanted to share that with you guys because I know I look freaking crazy. Alright, here we go.
From the teen CERT news desk, I'm your teen CERT PIO, Mihika Jane. Thank you to President Spreen, Vice President Sherlock, Commissioners, Staff and Public for having me here. First up in the news, Teen CERT Club at Los Altos High School is launching on April twenty fifth. Our Teen CERT Board has been working hard on planning our marketing and recruitment ideas. We look forward to engaging our fellow students in the Teen CERT mission and having them sign up for our next Teen CERT Academy that is launching at the event on April twenty fifth. Breaking news, we would like to thank the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two Teen CERT Board members for their strong work during the inaugural year of the Teen CERT Program. Many of them will be leaving us for greener pastures to college, so I'm happy to announce we will have a new CERT Board starting in. May of twenty twenty two. Stay tuned for more info. Wonder what we are doing to train on Teen CERT Response? We will be attending a Spring Drill at the ARC on April twenty third to learn how the ARC is set up after activation. And the different roles that we can assist with after we are activated. We hope to have some cool pictures and videos to share with you after the event. And last, on behalf of the Teen CERT Program, we would like to encourage you to come out to Los Altos Hills Emergency Preparedness Fair on April thirtieth. And join us in educating residents on preparing their homes both inside and out. We will be there looking to sign up some more recruits, so stop by our table and say hi. This is the end of my report. Stay tuned for our continuing coverage of Teen CERT and I will leave you with one last thing to think about. We're prepared. Are you? Good night from the Teen CERT News Desk and stay safe.
Shameless plugging, I know. Hopefully that encourages some of you to get out there and come meet our teen CERTs and come meet our community as well. Let me pull up the slides again here. So just to top it off, community education is rip roaring, ready to go here. We have a Stop the Bleed classes that are actually. Getting a lot of more participants. I believe I have fifteen or twenty people in this next class on Thursday. Again, it's for Los Altos and Los Altos Hills residents, so come on down and learn how to stop that bleed. We'll also be out at the Earth Day Event at Los Altos Hills. We'll have our CERTs out there, you know. Educating the community of what, what you can do to, you know, not leave a carbon footprint on, on the earth, so. And then, of course, we just blabbered it, but the Emergency Preparedness Fair is what, something we've been really focusing on as well. I'm going to let Cory share one more slide. I'm really proud of myself. I, I learned how to do some cool stuff with slides, so. Cory, can you share that slide for me, please?
Yeah, let me pull it up one second. Pick the right one, there we go. And can everyone see that okay?
Yep, look at you guys. I got animation. There's a doggy tail waggy and there's some paw prints. So I, I know Jay talked about, I don't know why there's a big thing in the middle, but this event was really great. I have a puppy and that was her first event ever and it was so great to meet other people's puppies. We had some CERTs there. That's Lisa Schmidt and her dog Seeley. We hung out with them for a little bit, but I mean, what an fantastic event. I just, I loved it. Yeah, it was muddy, it rained, but there was lots of doggy biscuits. The dogs enjoyed it. There was a big turnout and I just really wanted just to give a shout out to the Parks and Rec Department there at the town. They just. They did an amazing job at the event and I was really happy to be out there with, with the dog and people are kind of talking to me about. Just the district and wanting to know about the dog and so it was just a really great event and I wanted to kind of, kind of share that with you guys. So thank you Cory, I really appreciate you doing that. For me.
Welcome.
So next thing, let's talk about that, that great event. So we have been very busy. I want to really thank the Special Events Consultant Andrea Constantine for her help and really just getting people out there. It's been awesome. So we're at the point now where we're full. I think the parking lot, we are able to utilize. However, every single little inch of the town hall is pretty much either a canopy or vendor or something fun like a demo. So. Ready, America will be out there. There's the earthquake trailer. You can sit in there and feel what an eight point zero earthquake feels like. Although some of us may not want to relive that. Santa Clara County Fire Department is going to be out there with their booth. We always love having them. The Sheriff's Office is coming with a vehicle as well as a booth. We have the AMR ambulance company who the Hills, Los Altos Hills County Fire District contracts with for our medical response. They will be out there with an ambulance showing off that. We have the FEMA Youth Council, we have American Red Cross, our Permissory Water people are always great and they always bring a squatter for our event. Fire Safe Council, really happy to have them. They are just so fun to be at this event and so knowledgeable. We have the Los Altos Town Staff, of course, your favorites. At our booth, we'll have our CERTs out there, our teen CERTs. And then for our Alert SCC competition, I'm having a hard time coordinating a, a meeting, however, I'm going to have. Our, hopefully new emergency. Manager for the Town of Los Altos Hills out at a booth, sending people up for alerts at SCC. So it's the first time we've actually had a booth dedicated to that, really excited about that. Commissioner Laura's office is going to be there again, this time in person and this time with the booth. They're going to be one of our presenters. We have Actera, which is an environmental company. We have United Policy Holders, who's going to come out with a booth and do a presentation. And you can see the other picture here, that is the cow, it's called a cow. That is from FirstNet, so that is because of the district's contract with AT&amp;T, FirstNet. If we are in need of mobile wifi and signal, they will be deploying these resources. We get to have the front of the line for if something happens catastrophic in the hills that we need this for. There's many different kinds of devices that we can go to and I'm happy to share this with the new. Hopefully the new Emergency Preparedness Safety Committee at the town, so really looking forward to this event. We also have a key speaker that's coming from Stanford. He's done some research on indoor emissions. He's going to be kind of, I think, closing the presentations. But we're going to definitely want to see you guys out there. We have some goats we're trying to get, although the first goats decided they're not going to come. We're going to try and get some second goats in there. But, you know, really want to encourage you guys to come out. It's ten to one, you know, come, just stop by and say hi, but I'm really looking forward to having this amazing event. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Captain Gluen.
Can I just do a quick pause and see if anybody had any questions on any of that, since it's so important coming up? If there was anything that. Commissioners or public or anyone? Alright. If not, I will move right in. So my first topic that I have is the presentation that I did on March seventeenth. For the Town, Los Altos Hills Town Council. These are the actual two slides, very short presentation. I have an updated slide, but this was at the time, what I was, what we, the information we were putting out on the Altamont. Evacuation Route Vegetation and Hardening Project. And again, you've seen this before, it's about two point two five miles and seventy seven parcels. I'm going to skip all these other things because I have a better updated slide. Second slide I showed. Was to update on the fact that we want people to sign up for Alert SCC to be informed during emergencies. To get that early information or NICSIL, so the Alert SCC, hopefully competition that we'll have and. Los Altos Hills will be the victor hopefully in that little fun competition. Those are the links there. And then we also talked, I talked about the newsletter that has been recently put into our, our website, so those are actually from our page. And then again, because we always want to give messages when we present being prepared, so preparing some kind of a go-bag. For in case of evacuation or emergency preparedness and obviously all these subjects will be available at the Preparedness Fair coming up on the thirtieth. I will go ahead and go through my presentation. If anybody has questions, I'll, I'll hit my two, my few slides here and then I'll, I'll move on. So arrival date on the goats is still be, to be determined, but I did get a text message back from the owner of the company. He is waiting for the rain to kind of stop and we keep getting these little intermittent showers. He's thinking possibly. End of next week or the first week of May, so we're kind of getting closer to that arrival, so. To be determined, but he said possibly as early as the end of next week and I hate to have that last minute. Rush, but that's kind of how the goats come in. It's just whenever things look like it's at the right place and the timing happens. We, Victoria and, and her. And Andrea have been working very hard with the Town of Los Altos Hills Parks and Rec Department to set up a breakfast with the goats. They have a hundred and ten RSVPs for the event, so looking really forward to that. That's a new twist in the twelve year history of the goats arriving. We'll see how we can coordinate that, but it's a really good opportunity. Goats are really a hot button topic and vegetation, alternative vegetation management, so it's really good for us to get that time in and. Have a chance to meet with the public, answer questions, hopefully get to see the goats and again. You know, it's electric fences and they have dogs protecting them, but we'll do the best we can. It's not like a petting fair, but we'll do the best we can to let them. Get some time to see those goats. Next slide? Are we stuck? So the next slide is, will be the updated, it's not up yet. Am I frozen? Can anybody hear me?
We can hear you fine, but you're, it's still on the goats as you, as you see.
Okay, I just thought maybe I froze, so my apologies.
Victoria may have froze.
Looks like Victoria might have.
Okay, so I'm going to wing it. So, um, let's see. Let me get the details up on my, on my computer, just one second, my apologies. Oh, let me get my slides up on my computer so I can.
Looks like Victoria has dropped off. So I don't know if you want to share yours or not?
Okay. My computer crashed, too much stuff loaded up there. Okay, so, sorry, where, where are we at Denise? Sorry. Just at the, the Altamont updated slide, so about slide four? Please. You're going to have to, I'm going to have to. Beauties of Technology, please stand by, we're having technical, in, in the past, in the, in, when I was a child, you would have had a fuzzy screen. And it would have come up, experiencing technical difficulties, please stand by. So Irene won't be able to relate to that, but a lot of people on this call, my.
Things have been running incredibly smoothly so, so, so far, so our average is really good, so.
Yeah.
We're doing great.
Yeah, we just, you know, a little time to visit. Any questions about the, anything about the goats or anything to this point? Yeah.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yeah, the, the breakfast with the goats. Now, I just want to clarify, we're not eating the same thing as the goats and we're not eating the goats.
That is correct, that is correct. I believe it'll be something like a bagel and, and some, you know, beverage type situation, but we don't have to eat grass. And we, yeah, you don't have to eat a goat either. Not, definitely not, 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 that would not be good.
Don't share with the goats, George.
Oh, looking good, Victoria. She's my hero. Here we go. There it is. So this is just an updated slide for the Altamont Evacuation Route Hardening Project and again, this is in our. Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction Program. Whoops.
Sorry. I was trying to preload, I forgot I can't do that. Keep talking to you, I got you. There you go.
Okay, so again, Altamont Road and that goes from Moody Road to Page Mill Road. And again, the thought process in this is to have multiple ways out that are hardened. We started back two years ago with Page Mill and our portion of that. Completed the Moody Road Altamont, which we'll have a report in a minute about. And then this was a, a try and tying, try, tying in a triangle. So that there's multiple ways to exit from that kind of harder to serve further out residents in Los Altos Hills. Two point two five miles, the scope of work and project maps have been completed. Below you can see the parcel map and project right off of the Fire Safe Council project page, which is that link there. Projected start in late spring. We've had a couple little things come up along the way, so we. We've had a little bit of a delay in getting it started. We've got a total of. Eighteen right of entry parcels out of the seventy seven, which is about a thirty percent. We have about five to six more. On the way, way in, Victoria and I went out personally and met with some neighbors on some key parcels and we described those as places where roads met, pinch points. Extra vegetation hazards, those were the reasons those parcels were called out. We have submitted the SEQA, needed SEQA documents and again, if there's any questions specifically, I have Irene on this. But there, the Fire Safe Council will be managing the vendors and the contracts with those vendors, so. Once we get through this, this timeline, we'll get started here, hopefully late spring. And then I think we're rolling into the, the next portion from. I think it's our other set of slides, so that's the end of my portion. We'll go into the next portion with. Other, I think Irene's up next. Get those slides rolling. If there's any questions on Altamont. Or Town Council? Okay. And apologize again for the technical difficulties there.
Cory, you're going to have to pull, can you pull it up and share it? Irene's stuff, because I can't, no, I can't get on the internet.
Yes, give me one sec.
Thank you, sorry.
And just really quick, in case you, I want to reintroduce Irene, so she does the. Chipping Program Oversight for the Fire Safe Council and also does projects. She was with me on Moody Road, along with Dave and. Jim Young, doing the, the actual oversight and on the project, so she assists with that also, so I'll. Let her take over, thank you.
Thanks Denise.
Can you see this okay?
Yes. So I just wanted to provide the quarterly HIZ Assessment Report for Los Altos Hills. We have completed eighteen. HIZs in the month of January, eight in the month of February and zero in March. There's currently no outstanding requests for HIZs. So we're completely caught up. Eight, the eight completed in. The additional eight completed in January and the eight in February. As well as the three that were unable to contact and no longer needed were left over from twenty twenty one, so we had ten total requests. From twenty twenty two and they've been completed already. Um, so that's for quarter one of twenty twenty two. Down below, I also included twenty twenty, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two data. We had about seventy eight requested in twenty twenty. Twelve of those no longer needed it or we were unable to contact them and so sixty six were completed in twenty twenty. We had seventeen completed in twenty twenty one, following the same rules. And then in twenty twenty two, ten have been completed and, or eighteen technically, but. Ten requested and ten completed. I believe that is the last of my update for the twenty twenty two HIZ. Update, um.
Great, thank you, I see no questions? Okay, oh, yes.
One, one question for the staff and it kind of broad, uh I was by the town hall um the other morning. And when they did the remodel, they moved our trailer into, it has been parked by the side of the town hall, traditionally been parked by the sound of, side of the town hall. They moved it to the middle of the field. To get it out of the way for construction. They wrapped up construction a couple of months ago and our trailer is still sitting in the middle of the field. So can we look into getting it moved back to where it's supposed to go?
Are you talking about the disaster trailer?
Yes.
Yeah, it's getting moved tomorrow at two thirty.
Perfect.
That is service.
That's service, and it probably needs new covers for the tires, they're pretty, the uh the vinyl covers for the tire.
Already on it.
On it, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, uh Commissioner Sherlock?
Hi, just have a question for Irene, do we need to, um, that was great, thank you for the information. Do we need to promote the program more, is that why it fell off in March or is it just the time of year and people are distracted or what do you think?
Um, I think just because we were catching up with the waitlist, um, maybe. Um, from twenty twenty, since there was such a high demand in mid twenty twenty one that carried on, right now we do have the staff capacity, so definitely encourage it with among Los Altos Hills. Um. We, depending on our projects, um, we can, you know, we have the capacity to complete twelve to eighteen HIZs per month, so.
Great, okay, thanks, I may talk to you offline about that.
And I have a comment on that also, um, this is an opportunity for us to refresh the HIZ program. And hopefully wrap some kind of a a resident incentive program around it. So uh we'll be meeting with Fire Safe Council and exploring some of those options and then hope to report back in May. With what a refreshed HIZ program looks like.
Right, thank you.
And I just really quick um for Commissioner Sherlock, uh we also. Not that it's a replacement for HIZ, but we work, working heavily with Saddle Mountain and their Firewise, which has a very similar residential self. HIZ component to it, so that wasn't represented in the participants of the becoming certified, or I'm sorry, not certified, recognized. As Firewise, so there has been additional home ignition zone education going on. Just not official HIZs because we're having the residents kind of do the self inspection, self work, work, so a few of them have had HIZs in the past though. But we are definitely, COVID really hit hard on getting those done, and so we wanted to slow down, let staff get caught up, so thank you.
Gotcha, thanks.
Great questions. Okay, any other comments? See, I think we have a couple, do we have a couple more reports?
Yeah, so we'll continue down the rest of the slides.
Let me pull up real quick. Get the right one up, hold on one second, please.
I actually went out of order and I did the uh Altamont, so we can go right to that Moody Almonte.
Yes. So I can start item eight G, which is the final report on Moody Almonte. And what this report looks like is it's really a threefold report, the first report is an overview. Uh, written by myself for benefit of the commission. And it just talks about the background as to, this is more of a policy level report, talks about why we're doing. Integrated hazardous fuel reduction, how it fits into our strategic plan. And why it builds resiliency and community strength by removing hazardous vegetation. And then the discussion talks about the project itself, and I wanted to highlight. In a broad level, the successes the project has had and then also the insights and the lessons learned. And so that's what the, this report is to do. That's followed then by the uh, the attachments, which again emphasizes the strategic goals. And I think what's really important is if you go back even six months or a year ago and take a look at the chart of services. Uh, which is, continue to scroll down if you would. Thank you, keep going. Yes, this chart of services, you'll see how much this has been expanded. And over on the right hand side is the Integrated Hazardous Fuel Reduction Chart of Services. And all of those being integrated and trying to provide and build resilient communities by removing. Uh, hazardous vegetation by various a number of means. So, and then scrolling down additionally is Attachment Three, which is the final report on Moody Almonte, and this is. Compiled by Fire Safe Council. And then the finals, and with with the photos, and the final slide is. The expense or the cost to the district for the program, so this is our final report and I think rather than going through each of the sections. I'll just open it to discussion if that's okay, uh President Spring, and have staff comment as questions come up. So that's kind of the end of the review of that agenda item.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Any questions or comments? About that report, about that project? And you can, that report's there for everyone to read and and take offline, but uh. Very successful, I think everyone's very pleased with the amount of what's come out of that, so I think everyone should be really proud of that, that project. Okay, uh, is there still an item H to go to report? Wow, they just keep on coming, I'm telling you, it's great.
Yes. So item eight, H is the Report on the Defensible Space Brush Chipping and Debris Removal Program. And um. Let me pull that up. Like to review those slides, so starting with the cover slide? Yeah, sorry, I was, uh, somebody else started sharing, I think bumped me out, one sec. Now we have too many people sharing, right? Yeah. Yeah, so. There you go, okay, so another slide, gives you some idea of what um uh brush chipping looks like. Um. The first slide and and Irene, I think I'll turn it over to you, I'm I'm really good at doing cover slides, but could you take us through the slides if you would please?
Yes, thank you for the introduction. Um, so just to cover the twenty twenty one program and, or program improvements, um. I believe the last report you received was in March of twenty twenty one, so this report will cover April through twen- April through December of twenty twenty one. Um, so beginning in April of twenty twenty two, we changed it from. One, we improved it. Uh, to one two week service window, previously it was three two week service windows. This has reduced administrative costs, Fire Safe Council hours, customer confusion, encouraged contractor bidding. Um. Also in April, the Fire Safe Council stopped pre-measuring piles for the RFP to save labor costs and reduce the amount of time between when residents piles. Had been ready and then when they were chipped. Um, and that's when we got the fifty cubic yards per residence per household based on an estimate, um. Per household estimate based on the twenty twenty chipping data. In August of twenty twenty one, the Fire Safe Council implemented fireside software for more efficient registration process for the residents and for routing for the contractors. Um, the use of the fire safe co- software. Of the fireside software encourages a two hundred dollar pass through charge per day of chipping plus a twelve percent uplift. This covers um the registration, residents directions and comments, brush pile volume estimates and optimal routing for efficiency. And before and after photos for verification of pile size and work completed. Next side slide please. This is an overview of that data from April twenty twenty one to December twenty twenty one. You'll see that we um serviced five hundred and seventy one total residences. Um, and that's a total of sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty four total cubic yards of brush chipped. Um, you'll see the total contractor costs, the total administrative costs for the Fire Safe Council and then the total program costs. And down on the second table below, um, we've separated that out from contractor costs and then program costs. Um. And next slide. Here is a breakdown month by month, um, from April to December. Um, you'll see that there's quite a variety in um the numbers, uh consistent participation from the residents, we had a total of five hundred and seventy one. Residents throughout that time and that's an average of sixty three point four each month. Um, and then highlighted in red, you'll see that the total cubic yards. Um, were underreported due to a technical glitch with the software that impacts other numbers. Um, and that was fixed after that month and we've gotten that resolved. And we've also got the contractor costs, oh, that's perfect. I just wanted to point out that we have the contractor cost laid out here and the contractor cost per residence as well. All right, and so for the twenty twenty one observations, um, the annual cost for April twenty twenty one through December twenty twenty one per month are comparable to March twenty twenty. However, March twenty twenty, twenty twenty one per month, um, the cost cubic yard is nearly double. Um, to remedy this, the RFP will begin to use thirty cubic yards of brush per residence in April of twenty twenty two versus fifty cubic yards per residence. That was used in twenty twenty one. We have two contractors that usually bid, efforts are being made to increase contractor bidding and participation. Um. And occasionally there's very high bids from contractors that do not typically bid, so um the RFP process is being reviewed. And we're maintaining communication with our um contractors. There's no clear trends as it relates to the number of participants, cubic yards of brush, program costs, however, we do see trends. As it relates to seasonality, regrowth, public information regarding upcoming fire season and the anniversary of CZU complex, et cetera. Next slide. All right, so for twenty twenty two, our program improvements, um, we've added extra services for the residents with large piles, um. For to kind of picture that, we put in a four plus green bins, we implemented that in January. We also advertise extra services, features and monthly mailers, um, this um. Is from January to June, a full cycle of our areas in Los Altos Hills. Um, staff and Fire Safe Council, um. Time managed program has been significantly reduced now that the residents from any area can register without prior approval. And also staff and Fire Safe Council has reviewed bidding and invoicing protocols with contractors to support continued bidding with accurate billing. Um, we've applying new qual- quantity of brush piles um per residents based on the average pile size from twenty twenty one, which is thirty cubic yards. Um, we're collaborative, Los Altos Hills County Fire District and Fire Safe Council are continuing to collaborate. And refine the program and we're improving processes to encourage more contractors to bid. And that's it, thank you very much.
That's great, hey, a couple things, first of all, I've used this program. Twice now and my, my neighbor is using it as well, so I continue to see support for it. Um, one of the things we were worried about as we moved to a more frequent system was would would anyone abuse the system in some way or find a loophole to kind of cause problem? Has anything like that occurred or is there any sort of problematic type of usage you're seeing?
Um, we do see um familiar faces, people are using the program quite often, however, um, the returned um users of the program. They do have piles and it is a continuous, um. You know, the size pile that they are contributing.
Okay, great. Any comments? Well, that's great, well, first of all, I, any comments, oh, I see one member from public, Alan, you may go ahead. Let's see, do we have Alan online?
Here, but I don't see a um. A clock come up.
Your voice is online, so we'll uh, we'll just start and I'll keep track of the clock.
I I'd like to say that um. What the district contracted for, from a management standpoint with Fire Safe Council. And what they're delivering are two very different things. Um, they originally set out to say, say that they were going to go out and have someone come out and bid on each of these uh piles out there. And they stopped, they stopped doing that. Um, they said that they were going to have. An estimate done by the person requesting. How much material they were going to have out there, which they didn't um implement. And so what's happened is, is they're using a standard quantity, which is just totally arbitrary. And the district is being billed based upon that arbitrary quantity. I looked at the bills for the month of December. Um, first of all, they didn't receive two bids, they only received one uh legitimate bid. Um, the contractor was paid nineteen thousand and fifty dollars. The upcharge from Fire Safe Council was nine thousand two hundred and ninety eight dollars, which was a almost fifty percent. Upcharge uh for this, for providing the overview of the service. Um. Now you've heard that uh the fifty cubic yards is too large, so they're going to use a fixed thirty cubic yards, well. Um, although that might be closer to what people actually put out. Um, that also is an arbitrary number, it's not based upon how much materials are actually put out or how much material is actually chipped. I also question how they even determine the numbers that the, that they're um reporting since um. The bills didn't show any, any information with regards to the actual amount of chipping. I think the process is uh not as tight as controlled as you think it is, and I think there are substantial opportunities for improvement. And I believe a methodology more similar to what uh. McClanahan did uh previously is a more uh cost effective and uh efficient method. Lastly, I'll say, I don't think adding the opportunity to call in when you want is really a plus. Um, I think the fact that there are two times a year to get this work done is an incentive for people to get out there and. Uh, get their piles uh collected and chipped. And if you don't, if you know that you can do it anytime you want, you're just gonna put it, put it off and and not do it. And I don't think it's as efficient, so I think there are a lot of opportunities for improvement and I question whether the Fire Safe Council is really providing a substantial. Efficient management of the program for the district, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, so um, we've completed item eight, which is a huge list of things, uh, certainly the the. I hope what everyone else is realizing is how many moving parts are going on every month that staff is managing, um, and. Item nine coming up really was on that same list, I said, look, that's a, in addition to all the stuff we're doing, item nine is a huge one. Uh, let's let's show that as a separate item, so it really, these reports really show how much our staff is doing and I I. Think item nine will continue uh to impress with the significance of the work that's getting done. So let's go ahead and move on to item nine, uh, and to receive the. Really the report on the I two eighty project and the Cal OESFMA grant fund. Work, and I will leave it to uh Operations Manager Barnett to please provide that report.
Thank you, President Spring and and uh, thank you, Commission and staff and public. And it's great to see Seth here from Fire Safe Council and uh, thanks for staying on Chief Glass for this uh, and all that are listening and Irene. For this important project, uh lots been done and there's been uh a lot of collaboration to get to this point where we were able to submit. Uh, this grant application by April seventh, given um the vol- the the volume of components of the grant sub grant application, which you see outlined here. We needed narratives to describe the community, the problem and threat, what actions we were taking, what alternatives to those actions uh were possible. An example of an alternative was prescribed fire, so they wanted, why that wouldn't be the number one choice as an example. We had to come up with a maintenance plan, uh, environmental considerations. Um, and and thanks to uh Jackson, uh we had a tremendous library of photos, videos of the two eighty, which you see. Examples to the right, um, that I'll describe in a second, um, and again, it was just tremendous to have that library of photos, video provided by Jackson, it really tells the story. Of the the wildfire threat that I, the six mile uh two eighty corridor is. Um, from as soon as, you know, the, you're north of Page Mill. Um, in the bordering of the Stanford lands where the trees end, so all the way where you go south, the permanent decree, past the Moore Drive overpass. Which you see here, here in the photo on the right, um, is just. Area after area after area of hazardous fuels, which we plan to mitigate and remove. With the grant uh approval. With the grant, uh, approval, if that happens, it'll be a lot sooner, but this project is in place. And, and I think the biggest, um, message out of the slide that we as a staff want to communicate is the work that's been done, uh, is of value to the district and to the community. And for the out, positive outcome of removing these fuels, regardless of whether the, the grant is approved or not. Um, this is a project that's in the hopper. Oh, we'll be moving forward. Uh, the grant, uh, approval would, would make that, um, a, a sooner outcome than later, given the funding and the resources that it would provide. But if you look at the components that we've had to provide, we've had to, um, you know, develop a scope of work. Um, that we've had to develop the maps of the project area. Uh, we've had to define vegetation area categories, uh, which is important. And I, I so appreciate, uh, the, you know, Tim Young and Eugenia and Irene helping out with the scope of work and, and we had to define the cost. It's based on, well, if you're going to define the cost, what are you charging for by unit? What are you charging for? Uh, what quantity are you charging? We had to determine the number of acres. We had to determine how many trees. We had to determine, uh, how much acres of, of heavy vegetation, medium vegetation, low vegetation, which was assigned a, a, a work production for each. Um, obviously lighter vegetation wouldn't take as long or as much work as heavy vegetation with trees. And that all needed to work for FEMA in order for, or Cal OES for them to consider this, this project. So what goes into the scope of work was a phenomenal, uh, collaboration and is of value to the district again, regardless of whether the grant is approved. And so were the, the maps, uh, which Patrick Koller heard it. Um, again, defining acreage and using LiDAR data, um, define fuels modeling, which will only get better with the county efforts now. Um, it, but it was usable and we will only find the fine scale fuel model that, uh, we will have available to the whole town. Uh, by the, by the county to, uh, further improve our mapping and our, our scope of works. Um, as I said, we had to define all the cost estimations and just, justifications with the methodology. Uh, they wanted that methodology of how we came up with that cost defined. Uh, Sarah Hendricks did a tremendous, uh, benefit cost analysis. A number than one who came up with a number in the area of 3.5. Uh, so there is a tremendous benefit cost to this project is defined by FEMA's, uh, metrics. It is their metrics that define that BCA and the, the, the numbers we put in came up with a number that is three and a half times the minimum value. So that shows you just by that metric alone. Um, the value of this project to the community to mitigate. Um, in the agenda packet, you also have the matching fund commitment letter. Um, the grant total is 3.25. Um, that is not what FEMA.
They will provide what, um, oh, everything beyond the 1.3 we match. So approximately 3.9 million will be the funds of approved by FEMA. Um, we also have the maintenance commitment letter, which we project to be 10% a year, uh, or, uh, of the, of the, um, I'm sorry, 5% a year over 10 years of the grant projects. So that, uh, uh, approximately 265 a year is what we're committing for 10 years to maintain it. Um, we have to perform over the next six months, a visual impact assessment plan because since we're removing vegetation and we're exposing houses to more light and visual, uh, you know, uh, views of the freeway, uh, we have to perform a visual impact assessment within the next six months. We also have to perform the FEMA environmental checklist. We had to do that, uh, to determine the, uh, the species, uh, that may be impacted. Um, this corridor environmentally is somewhat degraded because it's a freeway. Uh, when it comes to, you know, and, and I use degradation as an environmental term, uh, there are species we do have, like, carrying areas we need to watch out for. But in general, this freeway area is a freeway and the right of way is what our maintenance, uh, what our mitigation plan will address. Um, and then finally we had to submit a miss with Sarah and staff, other staff help with the grant management budget. Uh, we can put in for 5% of the total grants for management costs. That basically makes sure that we maintain the, the transparency, the accounting, do the training and follow all the procedures that FEMA requires. Um, and just to define the pictures on the right, they really show the problem. And as I said, we have a tremendous library. But that's the Mora Bridge and you're looking south on 280, uh, towards Cupertino and the Permanente Creek. That's the south end of the project. And you can see on the right, the, the, the community of Loyola Mora in North, which is just north of Rancho San Antonio. And then on the left of the freeway, you see, uh, the unincorporated district Loyola. And, uh, you can see the, the large, uh, amount of trees and brush that have not been maintained, like I said in the previous, uh, commission meeting since it, it, it was built. And, and on the, you see another picture on the bottom, which is looking towards the Atascabeo over, overpass. And you see the hazard trees that, and the, the browning and you see the drought stress. It's so obvious. You don't have to be a forester to see that's a tree in trouble. So we'll have all the trees evaluated by, uh, a qualified forester. Um, to determine which ones are hazard trees and need to be removed. And, uh, all the, the center divide you see in the area is limited. Uh, we would call that a, a light vegetation area. Uh, where it's going to take a crew not very long to go through. Uh, on the east side with the hazard trees, we call that a heavy vegetation area where it's going to take a crew a lot of work. And so that just gives you an idea of what we had to do is actually calculate that acreage, determine how much the crews we're going to work through there. So we could calculate the costs. And all that work really goes into the district benefit of the future. Um, and I say this repeatedly, regardless of whether the grant is approved or not, um, these documents will stand as pro- for processes, as templates to use. And, um, we've done a lot of new things here with GIS, with, with video, with photography, with mapping with, uh, and so forth, created definitions which we can use. And, uh, that's all going to help our integrated hazardous fuel reduction program in the future. So while there is another slide, I covered a lot, uh, of this grant application being submitted April 7th. The next slide will cover next steps, but I wanted to pause for a second if, uh, President Sprehn, you or anyone else had questions.
Anybody have any comments? It's, it's, it's an incredible amount of work and, and I'm glad you've been, you've done a great job of give me a sense of how many people have had to bring data together, collate it and figure it out to make this a coherent proposal and get this in. So, uh, any, any comments from council or commission? No, nothing so far. So you go ahead. You can proceed, Dave.
Yeah. And, and I really want to give a shout out to Fire Safe Council and, and Eugenia and Seth and the group, because a lot of this isn't capable, uh, without a lot of the expertise that they bring to the forefront regionally. Uh, we couldn't have done the work. So we have, uh, we're working regionally and, and what you're seeing in front of you, uh, Fire Safe Council folk and Seth is, um, is, is a, a outcome of the groundwork that, that you enable regionally. So I want to thank you especially for, for what you've done and, uh, in that regard. So the next slide on next steps, uh, I don't know if we're sharing anymore. Uh, I will show.
There it is.
Yeah, there we go. Okay. Um, next steps. So we need to, um, uh, by Cal OES, they want a V, a visual inspection assessment before they submit it to FEMA. Uh, so we'll be doing that outreach with a contractor to do a visual inspection assessment, which will involve, uh, uh, you know, availability and outreach to the community and, uh, so they can have some input. Uh, we will also, uh, be available to Cal OES for six months, a projected period where they may, um, submit to us requests for more information. So while we have submitted as thorough possible, uh, uh, sub application to them, they are the applicant that submits the, all the California applications to FEMA. So Cal OES is actually the applicant. We are the sub applicant. So for six months, Cal OES reviews all the applications, including ours, and then submits back to the sub applicant for request for information. Um, we have a Cal OES assigned reviewer, Matt Medland, yeah. And so we haven't heard from them yet. And I'm sure they're spending this fifth month reviewing all the applications. Once the six months is done and they submit, uh, the, the, the sub application to FEMA, FEMA undergoes a 12 month review. And then they assign a team or, you know, an individual team, uh, to review. And then again, further request for information. We cannot start work on a project itself until FEMA makes a determination of approval. Once approved, there's training that we would have to undergo part of the, uh, the, the, the grant management, uh, uh, funding of the 265, uh, approximately 261,000 dollars. So we would send staff to just make sure that we are trained, that we have the procedures, uh, to follow. Uh, and, uh, we meet those requirements on an ongoing basis for the 33 months of the project. Uh, the final three months are a closeout period with FEMA and that is where really project, uh, uh, the grant management takes over and does all the, 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 the work and takes all the data and, and submits it and the reports required. But we're all projecting right now that if approved and after that, that we could potentially work towards hiring a project management vendor. And we can't immediately say that we could hire Fire Safe Council at this point. FEMA requires a RFP process, a competitive big process for project management. So we will go through that and then, um, Fire Safe Council would have the opportunity to participate in that process. And, uh, it might end up being a sole source. We're not quite sure. That's part of the training. Once we hire project management, we're projecting or could potentially begin as early as spring 2022. Then we would do the southbound, uh, west side. Uh, that's the projected in the first year. Then we would do the northbound east side, and then we would do the center divide. And then we would have to close out after 33 months of starting. So that's next steps. Um, and look forward to this work. And like I said, you can be confident that what has been produced to this date will be of value to the community and to the district, uh, for, you know, a long time to come, even after this project is finished.
Thank you, Dave. I mean, certainly the, this really shows the level of process and expertise required to tackle a project like this. These things don't get done without incredible amount of effort. And, uh, we've taken some really fast leaps to get started on this and, uh, are thick in the middle of it. So thank you for everyone. I know how much effort it was to get that in on time and how much continued effort it's going to be. Any questions or comments from the commission about any aspect of this? Uh, see Commissioner Sherlock?
Just quick question. Um, it could start as early as spring 22 or 24?
24. It's really, uh, because if you, 2022, once the, once the grant comes in and we have a year to do all the projecting, it, that's an outlier. I mean, we could potentially maybe fall 2023, but all the coordination of what it takes, one of the funding, one of the training, and then you go through the summer months. Uh, of 2023, there's, there's, uh, there's at least 18 months right now of just Cal OES and FEMA review. So 18 months from now puts us, uh, you know, in towards the end of, of, uh, 2023. And so therefore it's possible the end of 2023, but more likely it's going to be 2024 due to the 18 month Cal OES and FEMA review.
Gotcha. Just want to make sure I heard you right from what was on the slide.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Any questions from the public? Not seeing any hands raised. Uh, thank you very much, operations manager Barnett. Uh, we will now move on to, uh, item 10. Uh, this is the financial consultant and district clerk reports. Uh, financial consultant Vargas, please provide that report.
Thank you, Roger. And commissioners, let me get my share screen up. All right. Are you able to see that? Okay. All right. So this is, um, the rough draft of the fiscal year 2022, 23 budget narrative. And, um, I just want to first start out by giving a, uh, huge thank you to, uh, general manager Logan, um, and, uh, Sarah Hendricks for their assistance in getting this together with me. Um, and so this is included in your agenda packet and, um, I know that, you know, you received it on Friday. You might not have had as much time to thoroughly review it before the meeting as you'd like, but, um, as I said, this is just a rough draft. And so my goal is you will take this as your reading bedtime reading material and come back to me, uh, before May. Um, I am happy to take your emails and your suggestions, uh, any edits, any, uh, spelling errors, anything that you have questions on that maybe aren't clear. Um, please, please, please feel free to, uh, send me emails and we can incorporate, um, either answer your questions or incorporate it into, um, a budget narrative, which will come back at the, uh, May meeting. Um, I do just real quick want to point out, so we have a new look, uh, for this year. I've included now a, a table of contents, trying to make this a little bit more of a user friendly, uh, document. Um, broken down items into sections as opposed to before when it was just all sort of bunched together into one document. Um, our clear introduction, um, that beautiful chart of services that Jay reviewed earlier. Um, I do want to go over real quick, the budget development process. Um, you will recall, um, the commission did approve our final, uh, fiscal year 22, 23 budget in March. Um, now the, uh, County Santa Clara will, um, finalize the, uh, the county executives recommended budget, uh, tomorrow, April 22nd. Um, then we have the, uh, County Santa Clara budget workshops. Those are happening the 16th through the 18th. Um, ours is scheduled to take place on, uh, the 18th. And at that point, then, um, they present it, uh, discuss it. Um, hopefully no, no changes knocking on wood. And then, uh, finally in June, the, uh, board of supervisors will have their budget hearings. Um, ours is scheduled to take place June 14th. Um, finally then June 16th is when the final budget is approved. And I'm just, I'm, I don't want to waste time going through it. You have this in your budget packet, but I hope, um, you will all take the time to take a look through this document. And like I said, please come back to me with, uh, questions, comments, provisions, anything. Um, before the next meeting and, uh, we will discuss further at that point. And that is the end of my report.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the commission? We have our homework assignment for ourselves and, uh, any seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? Everyone has homework for this month. So, uh, okay. I see none. Thank you very much. I guess we will move on to item, let's see, this will be item 11. This is commission member reports, uh, an opportunity for commissioners to provide reports of anyone they'd like or any future agenda topics or any comments from the commission in this section. I don't expect any, but unless anyone has any new topics that they'd like to introduce for next agenda. Seeing none, we will move on. I don't think I really need to take an public comment on that, this item, since we had, had no report. Which means we will now move on to item 12, which is a closed session. Now, just to walk through real quickly, the fact that this requires some IT work. We're going to all for this one item, log out of here. Log into, I hope you have the email that Marcy sent around that has the right link. Uh, I'm sure one of us possibly even me will screw it up. I hope we see you on the others, on the closed session side. Uh, we will have our meeting there, then we will reverse it and come back here, uh, for everyone who will be waiting to finish the meeting. So at this time, I believe we will now sign off here and head to the closed session meeting. I will see you there.
Roger, can we just make sure that if there's any public comment on this item that we take it now?
On item 12 or item 11?
On item 12, the closed session.
Okay. Oh, absolutely. Okay. Let's take, uh, oh, I, I, you're absolutely right. I skipped over that. Before we actually join the closed session, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Thank you, Chris, for reminding me that I had skipped over to the, uh, the next step. I'm so worried about getting us all in the Zoom that, uh, I missed over that. Okay. The commissioners, consultant Scott and lead deputy county council Chelton will now adjourn to closed session. Commissioners, you received a separate email from consultant Scott with the meeting information. We will rejoin the Zoom upon completion of the closed session. Uh, that's it. Let's go.
Should we continue recording or stop?
I was just going to ask that. I think we decided we were going to continue recording, right, Corey?
Actually, I think that, um, last time we, we stopped recording. Yeah. Unless there's any issue with getting it to start recording again.
Shouldn't be. If I get kicked out, you're the, you become host. So.
Okay. Here. Great. Let's see. Let everyone else reappear. Okay, let me count Commissioners. One, two, three, four.
We got six, but we should do a
Oh, that's right, that's right. District Clerk Vargas.
Actually, I think we stopped recording, so are, did we start recording?
I heard the recording restarted.
Awesome. All right.
So now I've been asked to do a roll call again now that we've returned. So District Clerk Vargas, please do a roll call.
Okay, President Sprehn.
Here.
Vice President Sherlock.
Here.
Commissioner, Commissioner Pasigie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tonka.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Okay, and six, Mr. President.
Thank you. And as my script says, Lead Deputy County Counsel Chilton, please announce any reportable actions from the closed session.
At the closed session, which is item twelve on the agenda, the commission took no reportable actions in closed session. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. We will now move on to item fourteen, adjournment. And I want to thank everyone for having stayed through our closed session meeting, hanging on to the end. It's almost nine o'clock, and I appreciate everyone's time. This concludes the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District. The meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-four PM. The next regular meeting will take place via Zoom on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven PM. General NSBB, please stop the recording.